Let me call to order the first meeting of the new year of the Williamsport City Council. Please rise for an invocation by Councilman Derek Slaughter, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for bringing us together here in the first meeting of the new year. We thank you for the Christmas season that we just celebrated and the holiday season. We pray that you guide our thoughts as we make decisions on behalf of the city. And, Lord, as always, we pray that you wrap your arms around those that are in harm's way, both here and abroad, Lord, protecting the rights that we cherish here at home. Lord, we just pray that you watch over us, be with us. We ask all these things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of City Council meeting minutes dated December 6, 2018. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we'll move on to the next item, which is an ordinance in final reading related to the zoning map. And Mrs. Frank, if you could read the ordinance.
Okay. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and the map of the city of Williamsport.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve the ordinance in final reading?
So moved.
First.
Here a motion and a second. Mr. Nar, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Dr. Williamson and members of council. Tonight, what we present to you is the city's requesting a zoning map amendment. Initially, in the first, the first hearing that we had, we had basically offered two different, two different maps. One which would encompass the south side of Third Street. The second map would encompass both of them. At this time, the city's requesting, based off of the advertisement and everything that we did, that we would take into effect that the zoning map amendment would be to change CS Zone Commercial to CBD. The area south of East Third Street, north of Second Street, between Heprin Street and Center Street, said area to be rezoned as a CBD, based off of the second map that you do have currently. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. And just for clarity's sake, the two options that were presented to council, which of the two options was passed in first reading? It was the one with both north and south side of Third Street?
It was both. Actually, like I said, we had two separate maps.
Right.
One which encompassed the south, then the second map encompassed both the south and the north of Third Street.
And so the second one is the one that passed in first?
The second one is the one that we are passing.
And because procedural issues, not policy issues, you're suggesting that we amend so that we pass the first map tonight?
Correct. And then we'll move further to lay their date to basically a map, to do a zoning map amendment to encompass both sides of the street.
And so, no change in the recommendation of the administration. It's simply a procedural issue.
Correct.
That we need to, for advertising's sake, need to delay the north side by a couple of weeks.
Correct.
Or to another cycle. Okay. And so, to accomplish that, we need to make a motion to amend?
I think you would be making a motion to, I believe, I believe Mr. Nar said that were both passed or just the one?
Both were passed with the second reading to determine which one would be utilized.
Yeah, so you would just be making a motion to, to adopt as final reading the one that reflects the way the city wants.
Okay. So, so the motion that is on the floor was a motion to adopt the second map?
Right. Which, which the ordinance would state, the portion of the fifth ward currently zoned CS Commercial District to CBD District. The area south of East Third Street and north of Second Street, between Heprin Street and Center Street, said area to be rezoned CBD.
Okay.
That's the one we're recommending that we approve at this time.
So procedurally, then, Ms. Roy, we have the proper ordinance, the proper motive, motion under consideration, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Procedural stuff. Any comments or questions, then, on the substantive side of things? Mr. Anderson.
Just a note of clarification on what you just said. You had said that we had, we had both ordinances. We didn't pass both ordinances, just the one in the last meeting. Is that correct?
You passed both of them with the recommendation at the second reading, you would announce which one of those zones you would choose, which one of the maps you would choose. So you did make a motion to pass either the first or the second one. Based off of the second reading, you're asking to pass the first ordinance, which I just read to you.
Okay. So, to be clear and make sure that everyone is aware of what we, and I will ask for the motion in a second to agree to this before we proceed, the motion on the floor to pass in final reading is the ordinance that adopts Map One, which is the map that includes the expansion south of Third Street. And so, I'm not sure who made the motion in the second. I heard lots of voices over here. Is that, is that your motion? And, Mr. Allison, is that your second?
Yes.
Okay. I think that gets us, again, straight. I think the idea, Mr. Henderson, was that our, and you're looking through the minutes, so you can double-check on us. I think that the difference of how I would phrase it is that in first reading, we adopted both areas, and in final reading, the motion has been to restrict it to just the first area, the south, the southern area. Which is, instead of amending the ordinance, it's simply doing the same thing through the motion process.
All right. Yeah, 'cause the only thing that, the only question that had come up is with planning review, the second, the second map. And at that time, they had not made that. They made a recommendation on a recommendation that we're recommending tonight. However, because it was December 24th, the Planning Commission did not have a quorum, and they did not see this. But I did speak with a couple of members that had called in and said they had no questions or concerns.
Okay. But at this point, your intention is to re-advertise the area north of Third Street and bring that forward in the next couple of meetings?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, is that an answer to your question?
I, I understand what we are doing. I'm just, I just didn't recall doing it that way in the last meeting.
Yeah.
And, and so.
And I think, I didn't either myself, but I think if, if we make it the motion itself, it accomplishes the same task.
Right.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in final reading.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes. And the ordinance passes in final reading, and I will reemphasize that it is council's intention, I believe, that the other area be added, and so we'll, we'll work together to make sure it gets.
We'll advertise and bring it before the next council.
Yep, thank you very much.
Dr. Williamson, I omitted from the agenda the election of officers.
Ah.
Your offices.
Do we do the reorganization even without new members?
Together, yes.
Ah, okay. So then, let's move on to that part of the, I was thinking that was only an every other year after, after an election with new membership?
I believe that's every year.
All right. Then, let me declare open, without further ado, let me declare open nominations for President Are there any nominations for President of Council?
I'll nominate.
Do we, do we need to suspend the rules to make that happen?
Since it's not on the agenda, yeah, you should technically.
Can I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Here a motion and a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the rules are suspended. Now, is there a motion declaring nominations for President open? Are there any nominations for President of Council?
I nominate Dr. Williamson for President.
Second.
I hear a nomination. Are there nomination, other nominations for President of Council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close nominations for President of Council?
So moved.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to close nominations for Council.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Wait, 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 oh, wait.
We're, we're just closing. Closing nominations for President.
President, I thought you said.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and nominations for President are closed. I believe when there's been, our past practice is when there is one nomination, we have a vote, a voice vote. All in favor of Jonathan Williamson, as, to continue as President of Council, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. I guess I declare myself President of Council on the basis of that vote. Congratulations, condolences. Let me declare open nominations for Vice President.
I nominate.
Mrs. Katz.
I nominate Randy Allison for Vice President.
Are there any additional nominations for Vice President? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close nominations for Vice President?
So moved.
Thank you.
Here a motion and a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to close nominations for Vice President.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes. Nominations for Vice President are now closed. Given that there's only one nomination, I'll call for a voice vote on, for Randall Allison for Vice President. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Eyes have it, and congratulations. Mr. Allison.
You as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues.
Absolutely. Normally, I have, I think we've both had speeches prepared and.
Oh, I never have.
Yeah, me neither. But I'm glad I've gone through that before because.
Yeah.
I was unprepared for the process. Where were we?
Resolution for the tax.
Tax, 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 revenue anticipation.
Our long layoff has made us rusty. Do we need to?
Item six.
I was just double-checking in case we had any, I don't think we had particular ones. Okay, so next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing tax anticipation. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing tax and revenue anticipation note for 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Mr. Pavlock, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you. Council President Williamson, members of council, before you is a resolution to authorize the city's 2019 tax and revenue anticipation note and the amount of $2 million. As before, this amount helps the city with its cash flow until tax revenues start to come in in March, April, and May. The note is similar to prior years with some additional language requested by the bank, I think, to meet their obligor requirements. The interest rate for 2019 will be between the rates of 2.53 percent, not to exceed 6.53 percent, which is similar to the margins that we've seen in the past years. This resolution was reviewed by the McCormick Law Firm and the Finance Committee yesterday.
Thank you. Mr. Allison.
Yes, excuse me for my cold tonight. I'm sucking on cough drops, so. We reviewed this in finance, and it's, it's a cliche, but it's pretty much a standard item that we handle every year. The, the money is there as a go-to fund if we need it before the real estate taxes start to come in, and that's, they generally come in on the, the, around late March and April for the reduced.
To meet the discount period.
The discount period, yeah. So till that begins to flow, this is here in case we need some cash flow outside of the ordinary. So, we pass it to full body of council with a positive recommendation. And part of our discussion and part of Mr. Pavlock's discussion with us was that there would be every effort made not to have to use it, and the departments throughout the city would also, each department is especially cognizant because of our financial situation, to try to keep any kind of big costs down in the beginning of the year, so we don't have to dip into this.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the reso, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Henderson.
Just to, you know, I always like to say something about this one. It's a fun one. I understand the need currently, presently, but just to say, wow, wouldn't it be great if we didn't have to do this? And I think that's our goal, to be able to restrict our spending enough that we might hold something in the bank so that we wouldn't have to do this. Just a question, just to refresh my memory, what, if, if we were to, and I appreciate last year that we did not borrow all of this, but if we were to borrow it all, what was the, the interest, what did we end up paying, or what would we end up paying if we were to borrow it all?
It depends on the length and that, that you would have that money drawn down. As Mr. Allison had represented earlier, we'll periodically draw it down as needed for operating expenditures.
Correct.
So the cost could vary from year to year. We try to keep it under the $10,000 mark.
Yeah.
But again, that just depends on different scenarios as to when you draw down and the amount that you do draw down.
I think, if I recall correctly, we budgeted somewhere around 15. Last year, we only used, I think it was under 2,000 of, of that budgeted amount for that, if I'm not mistaken. And I appreciate the, the hard work to do that. But I just, I like to bring those numbers out, so we know what we're actually committing to should the need arise. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for various insurance needs. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution for various insurance needs per policy year 1119 through 1120.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve the, this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Here a motion and a second, Mrs. Pavlock.
This resolution is to approve the insurance cost for the policies identified in the resolution. This is for all of our liability and workers' comp insurance needs for the 2019 year under the services provided by our new broker, Arthur J. Gallagher. Through the, the marketing process for the city's insurance needs, Arthur J. Gallagher was able to find us a new carrier at a lower cost than we've previously received. It's under our expected budgeted amounts, which I think is a good thing for all. Due to the quick nature of the appointment of the broker in 2019, there are some things that we'll need to continue to work on throughout the year and hopefully achieve additional savings in the future, but we feel that the coverage that's being provided is consistent with coverages in the past. And with that, we've reviewed it with our insurance consultant, Jill Nagy, and Megan Dayhoff, Bill Nichols, and myself have worked with the new carrier and our new broker to ensure that the proper coverage, coverages are in place. With that being said, this was reviewed by the Finance Committee yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Allison.
Yes, we, we did review this in finance. And we've talked about this over the past several meetings. I just, the, on the first page, the cover letter, when you, you read down to the next to last sentence, is the, the most, dollar-wise is the most important. With the proposed coverage limits, the total premium shows savings from the adopted 2019 budget and an approximate $114,000 savings from the 2018 premium cost. So, in a year where we're scraping and scrimping to find every dollar, this is a substantial savings that is going to go into our, our general fund budget. And we've talked about the process, but having said that, I, I just need to commend someone who's not here tonight, Councilwoman Mealy, because she spearheaded council's efforts on this, and we undertook it as a finance committee to have the RFP and review these and talk to the different firms. We had not ever done that before, but we had the, the legal latitude to do that. We were advised that. And Councilwoman Mealy obviously isn't here tonight, but we need to give her our thanks and gratitude for all the time she put into it. And Jill Nagy is here tonight, and she was, she's our consultant, and she was instrumental in guiding us through the whole process. We needed someone who knew the ins and outs, the ups and downs, and to give us the guidance that we needed, just to put the process in place, not to tell us what to do, but to show us what we could do and how to do it. And we're, we're forever grateful for that. She did a great job of educating us in a short period of time, and we put it all together, and this year, it turned out great. So, it's a, a good news story to start out 2019 with, considering the budget constraints we face.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
What we did when we, when we were going through this process is we learned how much more we needed as far as insurance went with everything that we have in the city. And I think that was vitally important, and Jill walked us through so much of this. And with her expertise, she made us learn more and also gain more. So, it was, it was a great experience, and also, you were able to push us through in a short period of time, which we were. It was a crunch, it really was, to get this done. And the bottom line here, to save this $114,000 is a lot of money. It really is, and we appreciate all the work that has been done on your effort, Jill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Reiterating the thanks to Jill and, and her work in guiding, especially the Finance Committee, but also, let me just speak to the Finance Committee as a whole with, with Ms. Mealy as, as chair, but also Mr. Allison, Mrs. Katz, to, to work, do the hard work that it took them to learn from Jill Nagy and, and to do the interviews and, and to figure out what needed to be both a process and to make a recommendation and determine an outcome. And, and Mr. Allison read a number a second ago, but I don't think there's any, some people are more visual in, in how they think about things, and so, there's no better visual than, than, in my mind, than a graph that shows numbers that had been going up with, let's see, blue, the cost of our liability premiums, and red, the cost of our workers' comp premiums, pretty much going up on a, on a steady level over the last eight years, and this year dropping over $100,000 just on the basis of the work that Finance Committee did with members of the administration and under Jill's guidance and consultation. And, and let me also reiterate, and anybody, Mr. Pavlock, you can probably answer this, but what is being insured, the protection that we have as a city through our insurance? It may have changed carriers, but the, the substance of the insurance is exactly the same, correct?
To the best of.
And of course, we're reviewing whether we need to change that on an ongoing basis, but in terms of what was insured in 2018 and what is insured now, or after this is approved, is the same, correct?
Correct, to the degree that we haven't had changes from one policy year to the next.
Right.
Additional equipment, you know, a new vehicle, one taken off, yes.
Right, okay. And so, it's not like it's savings on the back of short, shorting ourselves protection. We have the same protection, and we're saving $114,000, or, and I didn't do the math ahead of time, about 10%, 15% of the total costs. And that, that's a big shift in one year, and hopefully, we can continue to see savings as, as everybody works together with our new broker in the coming year on some of the initiatives that you spoke to. So thank you for everyone, for your hard work on this. If there are no further comments, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the signature for a tree revitalization grant. Mrs. Frank.
A resolution authorizing the signature of the agreement for the tree revitalization plant, grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Here a motion and a second. Mr. Winter, how are you this evening?
Not bad. Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Thank you. This resolution is to authorize the award agreement with the Pennsylvania Urban and Community Forestry Council back in June, I believe, or July, I'm sorry. There was a resolution passed to submit the grant application for the tree vitalized grant. So, we were approved for the $8,281, which would place 80 trees throughout, in various places throughout the city. This basically just authorizes the mayor and the city controller to execute the agreement with the, with the DCNR for the 2019 program. It was reviewed by Finance and passed on with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allison.
Yes, we did review it in Finance, and it's a, as Mr. Winter said, it's an $8,281 grant that we, that requires a 100% match, but we're, we accomplished that by in-kind services, through city labor, volunteers, and whatnot. There's 80 trees, and you have the list of Mulberry Street from Brandon Place to Washington Boulevard, First Avenue from High Street to Rural Ave, Second Ave from High Street to Rural Ave, and Little League Boulevard. Little League Boulevard is going to get half of the trees, because that's, they're all dying on there because they all have ash disease. So, we'll begin the replacement of that along that section. This will help us to keep that aesthetically pleasing and help our, our green, our green move and, and all of that. So we did pass it to full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
Again, this is a program that was initiated by Ms. Mealy, her passion for trees, and we are replacing, and thank goodness she was, had the insight to do this because of all the ash trees, ash trees, we, ash tree, ash tree, say that fast, that have died throughout the city. And Little League Boulevard was the one that was really hit the hardest, and as you said, 40 trees are going to be replaced there.
Yes.
And, which is going to make it look really appealing again. So, you know, thank goodness there are grants out there that we can, that this, that we can accommodate our city to make it look. our city to make it look as beautiful as it has in the past. And while we're speaking of trees, can I switch the subject for two seconds? You are going to be picking up Christmas trees, right?
We have started picking up Christmas trees, yes.
Okay.
It will go on for probably the next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? One of our assets as a city, I think, in terms of the beauty of the city is, is the trees that we have, at people's homes, in the parks, and our street trees. And to be able to continue to invest in that is a good thing. And so, thank you for being a part of making sure that this continues and, and that beautification of the city through trees. Now, we might not always get excited about it in the fall, and we've got the leaves blowing everywhere and have to clean them up. But most of the rest of the year, it's definitely an asset that we all enjoy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for the collective bargaining agreement with Locals 2674. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution, collective bargaining agreement between the City of Williamsport and city employees, Loco 2674, ASME, District Council, 86 AFL-CIO.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Dayoff, Ms. Dayoff, how are you this evening?
Good, and yourself?
Good.
Good evening, President, and members of council. In front of you is a resolution to authorize the City of Williamsport to execute a contract amendment with Williamsport city employees, the ASME union, and the city. Highlights of the proposed amendments include the following provisions: A three-year contract, which is to be effective 1/1 of 19 through 12/31 of 2021; employee cost sharing for health insurance benefits. And you'll notice this is consistent with ASME, Public Works, bargaining members, at-will employees, and various elected officials; a wage increase of 2.5% for each year of the contract; new article for management rights; a new article for family and medical leave of absence; a new article for Health and Safety Committee; and an increase to life insurance for active members, which is consistent with the ASME, Public Works, and River Valley Transit. Minor changes have also been made to clean up the language. And in front of you is a complete summary of the contract amendments. We believe that these amendments are helping to move the city in the right direction and setting a foundation as we progress forward. This was reviewed by the Finance Committee yesterday. And I'm here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you very much. Mr. Allison, I keep thinking I should send it down to Mrs. Katz, but hold on for one or two more.
Yes, Finance did review this. We asked several questions on, on different items. I'm not going to go through them all. You may have questions as well. And I'll let that time go to other members. Just in general, a significant number of the changes in here are language that needed change to bring this in compliance with different laws, different practices, and also to have conformity throughout the unions that are involved in, in this particular branch. And the, the wage increase is 2.5% a year, which is in the norm of what people are getting now. And, but the, the big plus is the employee cost sharing for health benefits that was introduced last year. And this is, it's where everybody's going. And even the city government is now making progress in that. So, we commend the administration for, for being able to introduce that and keep the ball moving in that direction. And Mrs. Dayhoff did a good job.
It was a team effort.
Yes, we appreciate it. So, we did pass it to full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions? I just want to reiterate in particular about the health insurance side of things. It's unfortunate that as a nation, healthcare costs continue to rise as they do, and health, the cost of healthcare insurance continue to rise as they do. And I think moving in the direction that this contract does is moving us towards what most private employers and private employees have, have long realized is necessary, is having a share in those expenses between the employer and the employees. I don't think it quite gets us to a comparable level of benefits of what most private employers are now offering, but I think it moves us in the right direction, so.
It's a stepping stone as we move forward.
Exactly. And, and so, I appreciate that effort. And I, I hope that my colleagues on council will help to continue to provide leadership in that direction as, as we move forward and make policies. I think one of the things that will come across our plate over the next month or so is, is thinking about benefits associated to the elected officials for, in anticipation of the next election. And hopefully, we can make it more than voluntary, but make it a part of, of the mix of how the elected officials in the future terms will be leaders in, in encouraging sharing in those costs by the unions in future negotiations. So, I look forward to those conversations. Mr. Allison?
And also, before I forget, we should also thank our employees in the union for, for agreeing to this because we're grateful for it. And we know they're cognizant, they do a good job, they work hard. And we appreciate what they bring to the table and how they make the city a better place and make city government work well. And, and they're making a sacrifice on their part to, to help the city stay healthy financially. So, we do appreciate that above and beyond everything else they do.
Good point, and well said. Thank you. If there are no further comments, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for 43 West Fourth Street. Mr. Nar?
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, and members of council. Tonight, I present to you a request for a certificate of appropriateness for the rear of 43 West Fourth Street. The owner is 47 West Fourth Street LLC. The tenant is The Olive Tree. They're requesting to erect two dome-style awnings and one window sign. Previously, you had a drawing. I presented you an additional drawing today, or picture today, which eliminates the mural. The mural will not be part of the certificate. And if you have any questions, I do have a representative here.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve the certificate?
No move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
I think this is just going to make the building look much nicer.
Also, because we're not in the location right now, we exposed one of the brick walls on the inside, and we found a window that we want to open up where I have it in the picture.
Okay, where the mural is, there is, there is a window there?
Yes.
We will probably have to bring that back before because we need to make sure that it'll meet the building code side of it through the, through Mr. Girardi, to, to expose all that unless he's aware of it. Okay. So, instead of a mural, there will, instead of the mural, there, it's actually going to be a window.
Just to clarify, this, so there, we have two pictures. One was the original that you gave us.
Right.
Which was the one with what looks like a window?
Yes, it's a mural, instead of the mural, it will be an actual window that will be located there.
So, this was a, a painting of a window, not a, in, in what you originally gave us?
Correct.
The mural was a painting of a window?
Correct, and this is going to be an actual window?
The window's on the left side of the looking at.
If, if you could approach the podium. I think that's, well, I think that's already there. Are they moved?
This is, okay, so this is going away.
This is the window that we found.
On, on the second image that I gave you, that's exactly what you're requesting. The window she's referring to is the one in the, in both of them that say The Olive Tree.
That's already there.
That's already there.
We're approving the signage.
It's got cement blocks. It's been blocked off years ago from the.
They're just bringing the window out as, per the image.
Okay. And so, the one that does not have a mural but has a.
Is the one.
Essentially, a blank wall above the table and chairs.
Correct.
Is the one we're approving. In addition, I'll note that the, the awnings themselves are slightly different. Is, between the two photos?
Correct. The, the second one does not have the design at the bottom of the, of the mural.
Well, I think, it's going to have a little trim because it's something about holding the awning together. Because we have to make it out of the iron because of the fire escape in there. We want it to rest in the back.
It'll have stitching.
But the scalloped, no, no contrasting color?
I quote the type of the, the red, but it doesn't, you don't see the red, the red fabric. So, it might be white, a little white, scallop.
The red and maybe a little white scalloping on the awning.
Correct.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda is accept for filing. We have the Veterans Memorial Meeting minutes of October 2018. Can I have a motion and a second to approve, accept those for filing?
No move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are approved. Next item is announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, September, not September, that would be nice, January 17th, 2019, at 7:30 here in council chambers. Immediately following this meeting, we have an executive session for the purpose of public safety. Other upcoming meetings include Monday, January 7th, at 12:00 p.m., Planning Commission; Tuesday, January 15th, at 10:00 a.m., Blighted Property; 1:00 p.m., Finance Committee; 2:30 p.m., Public Works; 3:30 p.m., Public Safety; on Thursday, January 17th, at 4:00 p.m., the Board of Health. That brings us to the close of our agenda this evening. Are there any comments by members of council? Mrs. Katz?
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Campana, I have a question for you. What was in the paper today was the, what's going on in Memorial Park. And the question I have is, you're going to be putting mulch down, take up the, the padding, and put mulch down in the park, in the playground area. My concern is, and this goes back to when I was on the representative for council with the Rec Commission, that everything has to be handicap accessible. And I don't care what kind of mulch you put in there, it's going to be very difficult for wheelchairs to go in there. And I'm, I'm really concerned that that's what's happening. And also, this was not in the budget, so where is the money coming from?
Actually, I would be glad to address that. That service was placed back in early, actually, the mid-1990s. When I first served the city, it was 1996. And it was put in about between 96 and 98. It's blighted, number one. Number two, it is a safety hazard. We have been contacted by several individuals that their children have tripped, they have fallen. And for all of us, our team, we have discussed this for at least six months. And I don't want to put the city at any legal, any legal situations, any additional litigation, because we have too much as it is. So, we've talked about it in-house. Adam can address the cost of what it was and how it will be appropriate for children.
I, you know, we understand. We've always talked about the cost of what the padding would be. I am just, you know, first of all, I really thought we were going to try to go after funding.
We.
And I, I really, that's what I think we were looking for.
Yeah, we did, actually, was it $80,000, Adam? It was $80,000 to replace it. We don't have $80,000.
We can't, we can't do $80,000.
And we, we did actually filled out several grants to take care of that. No assistance. There were several nonprofit organizations that we approached as well, including UPMC and, and Geisinger, with no successful results with that. So, we spoke about it in-house. It had to be taken care of because we did not want any additional litigation. And it's being addressed now. You may say, why now? Well, we want to take care of it during the spring, and we could not do that because of the amount of water that we had. We would have had issues with trucks being entrenched in that area because of how wet it was and how muddy it, it was. So, we talked about it in-house, and we said, since we had individuals approach us in regards to forming a Memorial Park Committee, in regards to basketball, and that's something that I've wanted for a long time, but we definitely wanted the citizens to step up to the plate and take ownership. So, in conjunction of that, we decided to do both of those things at the same time. And we're working on it this week.
Okay, my other question is, a 10-member committee? Is that going to come to us?
No. No, it's not. It's actually, it's a, to not create another ordinance and another committee and another recreation because, as you have spoken to the Recreation Director, there's talk about minimizing some of those committees because it's, it's too many hoops to go through. So, I was, if you want me to address that, I would be glad to because I'm very elated over the situation. When the courts were taken out several years ago, no one would step up to the plate. I spoke to the community. Nobody came forward and said, we will help monitor this situation. So, you remember what it looked like? With the drug activities, and morally, as, as a father, I could not allow somebody to know that these types of activities that were occurring with the videotapes, if you've seen them, Mr. Slaughter, I think you would agree with me. So, you had that, you had the cursing, you had the drugs, and you had the parks, the streets and parks, I had to go there every day to, to clean it up. So, what I did is, we removed the hoops for two weeks. And we said, you know what? Is anybody willing to step up to the plate and help us as a committee to help monitor the situation? No one came through. No one came through. So, what happened? They were removed again. And I've been waiting for a number of years for people to come up to the plate and say, can you assist us? Well, guess what? Last few months, a group of individuals came to my office and said, can we help? And another influence for me personally was a former student of mine, Alize Johnson. He was a fifth-grade student of mine at Stevens, now is a professional basketball player. And I had discussions with him. And other children came up to me as well, and they said, are you the guy that took away the basketball courts? And I said, yes, I did. And I told them why. And several other family members came up to me in the last few months as well, and they said, we want to help. And I said, this has to be a partnership. And I would be glad, and it was my right as the mayor to remove that for safety reasons.
If, if I could interrupt just as.
If you're asking me, I'm just giving you a little story.
I just have a side question, if I could, Ms. Katz. I can completely understand not creating a normal, formal, another formal organization as part of the city. But, on the other hand, I would love for you to share with us this evening the names of the members of the committee so that we can publicly thank them.
Well, what I would like to do is actually, I do not have the names at my disposal right now, okay? But there are 10 individuals that have approached me, and what our plan is. We want council to be involved, we want you to be engaged, we want you to know what, what's happening, okay? This is an open, transparent process as well, so.
So, you don't know the names off the top of your head?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No, I don't. I mean, I know, like, about seven names, but I'm not going to list seven names. No, I don't. No, I don't. I mean, I know like about seven names, but I'm not going to list seven names if there's ten people. I don't want to slight anybody. But what I'm going to do is this, if I may. What I plan on doing is having a meeting sometime next week with these individuals. And before we do that, and I have to contact these individuals to see if they can come to a meeting, we're going to have a phone call with a very influential person in this community that is willing to put some dollars into that area without taxpayers' dollars. And I'm not going to list that individual's name right now. I'm not going to list it because he does not feel comfortable. But you will be kept abreast, and I'm sure everybody will be very, very pleased.
And just one more thing, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Katz.
If I may...
If you would like, you said you wanted to get us involved. If you'd like to have the ten individuals come make a presentation about their plans as the Memorial Park Committee at the next meeting on the seventeenth, we're more than welcome to add that as a presentation.
I will consider that. But there's one thing I do want to say. I don't want this stuff to become political, and this is wrong. If anybody here on city council has a question, you can call me at any time. I'm always here, okay? You can call me on the phone. You can come to my office. What I don't appreciate and what the taxpayers do not appreciate is elected officials taking shots at me or other individuals on their personal Facebook page. That's wrong for political reasons. If you're going to say something, say it out in the open instead of hiding behind a screen. And I'm not the only one that feels that way. But personally, you know, we have all talked about a new year, two thousand and nineteen. Why don't we all try to live it? I'm trying to do my best, but I'd appreciate if all seven would do the same thing. But taking shots after individuals approached me about putting basketball courts or doing something I don't believe and most people I believe is something good. Let's try to take some of the politics out.
Mrs. Katz, thank you for the time. I just look forward to meeting the ten individuals and thanking them for... That was all my question was about, so thanks for letting me have the time.
When it was in the paper this morning, it was, I mean, I'm happy somebody stepped forward to do something like this. You know I said to you when you took the hoops out that you were only moving the problem somewheres else and not solving the problem, and it was going to create an issue, which it did for a while. The thing that I was more concerned about was handicap kids getting into our playgrounds. That's where I was coming from. And ten members on a committee, I think the thing that hit me is, well, there's ten people that have come to you and we can't even find ten people to fill positions in other, on some of our other committees, including our Rec Commission. And I found this very interesting. If any of these ten people are willing to work on the Memorial Park Committee, maybe they would also be willing to work on the Rec Commission and some of the other commissions.
That's a great idea, and we'll definitely talk with them.
Because we're constantly looking for people, good people, that are willing to work. So when I saw ten people, it's like, where did he find ten people? And it's like, and I would appreciate, I think we would all appreciate to know and shake their hands for coming forward.
And the other thing I would add is in regards to the next council meeting... New individuals that are going to be representing the police department will meet you. They will give a presentation. We'd like to have an executive session with council to talk about some of their goals as well. This gentleman right here has done such a fine job, big shoes to fill. And in regards to tonight, with the executive session, we're going to go over how much progress we have made in regards to crime in the city. So I'm very pleased to speak to council about that.
Mr. Allison? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Katz?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Just briefly, the committee, whoever they are, the ten people, I guess, I... I understand what you're saying. We're trying to process how this is going to function because we do have a recreation commission, and we do have a recreation department. And to me, any facility should be under that because we can't have a group of citizens making decisions about our facilities and interacting with it on a way that other committees and commissions don't if they're going to be interacting with the facility itself and the people that are there. There's a lot of legal hoops to jump through. There's Act Thirty clearances. There's...
It's not going to be anything like that.
There's liability.
Similar to... The mayor has several committees, okay? Like my council of economic advisors, and I have other advisors as well. It is a not, it is not a committee. It's, I'm sorry. It's a committee. It's not a commission. So these are individuals that come to me, that I listen to as a mayor should, the citizens that give you advice. So these individuals are going to go out and basically, they're going to take a look at the situation. They're going to give me personal recommendations. And periodically, we're going to let them come to Recreation Commission and tell them what their opinions are. So it isn't any type of legal responsibility. It isn't taking any role from Recreation Commission. I hope, when we have the discussion with Recreation Commission members, I hope that they, that they're willing to engage themselves a little bit more in this area because...
Just from my point of view, it absolutely is a recreational facility. And it absolutely is related to the Recreation Department and Commission. But aside from that, I just, I think, you described earlier the reason you took the hoops down was because nobody stepped up to police what was going on there. That's what has me concerned. We can't have a committee of people that is not part of the structure. You can have a personal committee, but your finance committee that advises you about finance has nothing to say about our city money, we're policing it, we're touching it, we're making decisions. Now, it sounds to me like if this is going to be a policing committee to clean up, to make sure... Okay.
This isn't going to be like the Crime Commission, people walking around with flashlights, nothing like that. This is an informal body of people that have approached the mayor, which I really appreciate because it hasn't happened before. They're going to actually give me their personal advice. They're going to engage with individuals, maybe even play basketball themselves as well. But I think it's a good thing, and the police department at the next meeting, we're going to tell council how they're going to be working with Recreation Commission, how they're going to be working with this committee, and how we're going to show a little bit more presence. Because we do not, and I know everybody, nobody wants any issues like we had before. We don't want that. I don't want to have to take out anymore, but this is where this whole plan we want to discuss with council because there is an individual that's looking at making some major investments there. And I personally believe, I don't know why you're chuckling, but I personally believe when people, they put their heart and soul into something and you give them a nice area, most people will take pride of the area. If they see, and the goal is, someone throws some trash down and somebody that's engaged in that area, they're going to say, excuse me, will you please pick that up right now? You know, this belongs to everybody. And that's what one of the goals are. I think it's a good thing. And we're just going to move on.
And those are things we can talk about later. The other thing that just off the top of my head concerned me was the... Admittedly, we got the press release, but not detailed, so, you know, it was too late to make calls regarding that because we got questions about it. But that the plan is to leave the pickleball court and put the basketball court on the other side where the fourscore was? Okay. I don't think those are two sports that can cohabit such a close place because you have, you have a different, you have a different age levels, playing different types of activities. The one, basketball, by nature, and it's not a bad thing, it's a very aggressive moving sport, and balls and people go flying. If they're cohabitating like that, having played both... I've never played pickleball, but I played tennis and I played a lot of basketball. This is the kind of thing I would like to see, a plan that we look at. Is that really the good way to have them?
Well, my personal feeling is this is why we have Recreation Commission and we have people that are willing to step up to the plate that can evaluate the situation. Because there's actually, there's individuals that want to put another court there. And part of this group, they asked me, could we put two courts there? And I said, let's put one court at a time. And we're going to see. But I've already directed streets and parks to begin, and...
We'll see. You said, no, no, you...
I found it funny.
Well, I think that illustrates part of the problem. It's not political. It's procedural. If they're going to move ahead already, the questions that, legitimate questions that some people have, can't be asked. It'll be too late, just like we couldn't address the hoops being taken down because they were taken down before anyone could discuss or, you know, organize or anything like that. So I just don't want to see, I want to see it succeed. I don't want to, you know, it caused a lot of turmoil in the community to have them taken out. It was a sore point. Now, you know, we're going to do a positive move that can affect people's lives positively. But I want to see it done in the best way so that we'll succeed. And I think there is some legitimate things to look at before the streets and parks jumps in and starts to do something.
I'm really concerned. My history of this city, of working here for nearly twenty-four years, has been, you talk about things and they never get done. They're put on a shelf. They're studied for years and years and years and they're never done. And sometimes you have a golden opportunity, you have citizens that are willing to step up to the plate, and then you turn them off. Like you're saying, we have a hard time getting volunteers. And that's because of certain reasons. And I'm not going to get into it tonight to talk about it. But I think some people know why some people quit on certain committees, why they don't come back. That there's some, there's too much negativity. And personally, I think there's too much negativity in this world. There's too much negativity. There's been a lot of negativity here, and I'll take some responsibility. And I think we need to be a little bit more positive. I don't know if this is the forum to have this discussion on Memorial Park right now, but if you want to call me tomorrow or if you want to meet at any time, I'd be glad to meet with council members at any time individually or as a group to continue this discussion.
That would be fine.
I think there's a Rec Commission meeting on Monday. I think there's a Rec Commission meeting this Monday coming, I believe.
See, mayor, I think we just, we asked tonight only because of the press release. And we weren't aware of what was going on, and people come to us.
Okay. Now, did you get the press release yesterday?
We got the press release. I didn't get it till late because I was working, okay? So, and then it's in the paper, and of course, people are calling and they want answers.
Sure.
And that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be glad to answer your questions anytime.
Any further questions on that? Any further comments? Mayor, your administration?
Nope.
Any comments from the general public? Mr. Miller?
Scott Miller, eight twenty-two Tucker Street. Good evening, council members, mayor, administration, everybody out there. Well, my first thing, I think the mayor has actually allayed some of my concerns. But one of the things I was wondering is, explain to me how the city has the time and money for basketball courts, but not the time and money to fix the potholes. Secondly, explain to me and all the elderly and disabled people in Williamsport why government employees deserve a two-and-a-half percent per year call and the elderly and disabled on their social security checks don't. I think what's good for the goose should be good for the gander. You know, it's very unfair to the elderly and disabled to get meager social security increases when from federal to local, everybody else gets more. I always point out, some years ago, social security recipients got a one-point-seven percent increase and the governor and legislature of Pennsylvania got a two-point-two. What, does it cost more to be wealthy? And the next thing I want to bring up is the tax increases that we have. Except for Pastor Henderson and Councilman Slaughter, all of y'all have served two or more terms. Exactly when do you take ownership for the city's budget and the state of the city? People always say, oh, take ownership, take ownership, take ownership. Dr. Williamson, you've been there, what, ten, twelve years now? When do you say, hey, the problems that the city is facing might be part your fault, you know? Mrs. Katz last year said, oh, let's have a teeny, teeny, teeny little tax increase instead of a big one. This year, we're going to have a point-seven-five mil tax increase. Next year, it's a one-point-two-five. I've had people ask me, why are they doing that? Two easy words: election year. How many of y'all would get reelected if you raised people's taxes one-point-two-five this year? So you're just going to shove it to after the election. So please, explain to me, when all of y'all that have been here for seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, mayor said, what, twenty-four years? When are you going to take ownership for the problematic financial situation the city is in? I want to see some ownership this election cycle. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Are there comments from the general public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor? Aye.